And with that, I'd like to call the study session to order.[2.65][2.65][laughter] Today we'll be discussing our proposed budget personnel initiatives and capital projects. And Mr. Johnson, we'll just turn it straight over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So first off, before we get into the presentation, I just want to kind of explain some of the stuff that you have for your handouts there. I've got some of the stuff that's in the presentation so that you can look at it a little bit cleaner as we're going through. It's both where we're at with our fund balance before any of the requests that we're going to talk about, and then where we would be after the request. And then also a spreadsheet of all the different requests that we can discuss. Also, at the last meeting where we talked about the operating budget, we had some reductions that we went through, and there was a request to kind of look through that and put an asterisk and kind of give a little bit more information of things that are for the unused portion of the budget. So I've got those on the big sheet here. Anything that is in red with the asterisk, those were items where we have had a history of unused budget, and so those are ones that we targeted with some of those reductions. The ones that are still in black, those we had been using the budget, so those were determined for different reasons that we could make some reductions as well. So I just wanted to bring that to you so you can kind of look at it and see that we did go through and look at that so that we can give you the information on that. So that being said, let's go ahead and get into the presentation here. And I'm going to go ahead and just kind of jump to what we're looking at today. First off, we'll kind of go over where we're at in the process and then what we still have to do. And then we're going to talk about the revenues. There's not a lot to talk about in the revenues. There is some revenue included in these requests, whether it's grants or things of that nature. And then the only real change, and it's a very minor change, was a slight reduction in property tax estimate because we did get the information from the county, and our new construction is a little bit less than what I expected. So it's about a $10,000 reduction. Everything else, for the most part, in the operating revenues is really close to the same. So I've got it in the presentation for you to look at, but there's really no, nothing really of substance to talk about there. The majority of the increases that we see from version two budget to version three just includes what we're going to talk about with the initiatives and the capital requests. Then we'll get into the actual requests and go over those and ask questions as we go. Some of them we'll kind of go through a little bit more rapidly because you already have heard about them, but we'll go through those if you have questions about certain things. There are a few specifically at the Budget Advisory Committee that there were questions raised. We'll talk a little bit more in depth about those. So for the budget calendar, where we're at now, we've already talked about the operating budget. We talked about the initial version one of the budget. We did see a negative amount. We worked on it at the staff level and then went over it with both the Advisory Committee and Council. And we got that corrected and got a positive amount going into this part of the process, which is initiatives, personnel, and capital projects. The next step after this, we'll meet for another study session at the second meeting, sorry, second study session of this month, just to wrap everything together after we get direction today. And then from there, we start going into public hearings. And we'll release the proposed budget to the public on November 1st. Typically, we do it a day or two before that. The statutory requirement is the first. Then we'll start the public hearings in November with hopeful adoption, the first meeting in December. So with that, I'm just going to kind of highlight a couple of different things. You've got some slides on revenue structure, mainly for general and street fund because that's the most flexible sources that you have as a council to make decisions on, and then kind of where the fund balance would end up being on slide five. This is, again, looking at what we have. So this is taking into context the things that have been moved forward by the Budget Advisory Committee. So this very well may change by the time we come back to you the next time. So I'm going to jump ahead quite a bit here because the rest of it, or the next few slides are relative to revenue. Like I mentioned, there's really no big changes from what we talked about before. Let's go to slide 11. I just wanted to point out our reserves. We have an estimated 4.1 million reserves is what our policy would call for for 2026. We're currently at slightly over that, 4,165,000 for 2025. And then that's general fund overall reserves estimated by policy at 10.4 million, currently at 9.8 million. In the narrative part to the right is our debt service reserves. We have two equipment loans that the general fund pays for. That's about 141,000. About 2.8 million out of REIT that pays for our bonds for the outdoor recreation complex, op center, Pioneer widening, and a public works board loan for Royal Road. I also have gotten estimates, if council chooses to move forward with doing a debt issuance for the community and recreation center, what the estimated debt service would be. First year would be 489,000, interest only. Twenty-seven and 28 will be 695,500, interest only. Then after that, through the maturity of the bonds, would be about 1.2 million, including the principal payments. So let's go to the next slide. Thanks, Julie. This shows the debt service estimates, both our past year and then all the way through 2030. This is important to kind of show where is our debt service going to have to be paid from. Right now, what I'm estimating for 2026 is real estate excise tax and the tax increment revenue, and general fund will be paying for the debt service. In 2027, we will begin to have to use park impact fees if council chooses to move forward with a debt issuance for the community center. So that would pretty much, real estate excise tax and park impact fees would be used for debt service for the full amount of what those fund balances would be each year up through 2030. And again, that's in the future, so it's just an estimate, just so you have kind of an idea of where we're at going forward. Any questions on that, or can we jump forward to? So on slide 13, this, you're going to see this same slide twice. And you do have, again, this copy here for you to look at a little bit bigger. This shows where our fund balance is currently in each of the different funds, and then where it would be if all of these initiatives, capital projects, and personnel positions were approved. Now, I do have an asterisk next to the general fund because it does show that we wouldn't dip into policy reserves at 610,000. This does not include what we're talking about with any new revenues at this point. So it's just what we are today and where we would end up. That's a different conversation. We have that conversation next week at the next council meeting. So let's jump to slide 14. So I'm sorry, I forgot to print this one out, and I should have. This is the city council goals, and this is important in that every initiative that comes forward has to match at least one of city council's goals. So typically, what we try to do is we try to make sure that these meet multiple goals. And this is what we show in the budget when we're looking at our performance metrics, which is our report card out to council and to the public. How are we meeting these seven goals? What are our projects and our activities that we do that feed up to these seven goals? So what you're going to see as we go through each of these initiatives is, on the far right-hand side, it's going to say council goals met, and it's going to have the numbers, and it's going to match what's on this particular slide here. I apologize, I meant to print that out for everyone and forgot to. For those, if you do have your binders, it is in there. So first off, what I wanted to show first is we always talk about our carry-forward projects. And we typically have a lot of projects that are multi-year projects, so it looks like, why are you carrying so much forward? Well, first off, what we didn't do last year, but we wanted to do this year, is not only show the carry-forward projects and what budget we're going to need for next year, what did we complete that were either one-year projects or carry-forward projects that came through and completed this year? We completed 21 capital projects, $39.8 million worth of funding for those. All of those, again, big projects. Pioneer widening will be complete. We finished up, you know, some of the punch list on Royal Road. We've just got multiple different things, so we wanted to show the work that has been completed as well, in addition to, you know, the ones that we are going to have to carry some budget over. So let's go in, and I'm going to start reading them off. Please stop me if you have questions about these. Most of these projects you know about because we've already done something with them. So the first one is Royal Road. This is South 19th to Hillhurst. This is the final design of that last section of Royal Road. This is paid for with a public works board loan. Our 2025 appropriation was 555,000. What we would like to put in, we need to put in the full amount of the loan amount, which is 625,000, so we're asking to add an additional 70,000, again, paid for with outside funding. Then there's the I-5 South Connector Project. This is paid for mainly with an RTC grant with a small match from general fund, and this is carrying over the full amount of the project. Then there's the South 35 Avenue Extension Project. This is paid for out of developer funding that we already have on hand. The developer has already paid us for this. And this is carrying forward 442,000. Okay, I'm going to get the larger one here myself. Then there's the Carty Road Multipurpose Trail Phase One. It's a Hillhurst crosswalk. This is, again, RTC grant and general fund. This is carrying forward the full amount of 115,600. And then the Welcome to Ridgefield signage. This one's in here tentatively. We're still working towards trying to finish it. It depends on how fast we can get the materials and stuff completed, but that would be carrying forward the full 50,000 pending it's not done this year. G Creek Trail North Segment. This is paid for a majority of it with a FLAP grant, and then the match coming from park impact fees and carrying forward 210,000. This would complete design and prep for construction in the future. Hydrogeologist Study. This one, on the last one on this page and first one on the next page, these are companion. We're breaking it apart because there's really two pieces to what this project was doing. This is paid out of water system development charges. The first one is new water rights. So this is studying new water rights that we can acquire for new wells that we could drill later, and this is carrying forward 100,000. And then the second part of this is the acquisition of the Kennedy water rights. So this is the work that we've been doing. We're on, I believe, year six now of having purchased the water rights and trying to get ecology to actually assign those rights so that we can finalize that project. And initially, the full budget for this was 1.1 million. We're asking for each of these phases just to carry over 100,000. So some of this also included a lot of work for the well, which we don't need to do right now.
Question is, a million dollars for the water rights? Who did that go to?
So it's, that's how much we had in the budget initially, but there was more pieces to that particular line item. It was the water rights for looking for new water rights, the water rights for finalizing everything for Kennedy well. That's paying for our consultant and for ecology fees and stuff. And then the remaining 900,000 or so was for work going towards actually drilling the well. We aren't going to be able to do that this coming year, so we're not asking for that money to be put into the budget. We're only asking for the water rights portion of what was originally in the budget.
Thank you. Backing up one more step, the hydrogeologist study, 100,000. I mean, obviously, I think it's important for us to be aware of what our options are. I guess, what does that work look like? Because, I mean, that was quickly spoken to, and I don't want to go too far into the weeds on it, but what, what would that look like? Because it's, like, I think that somebody coming into it would be like, don't we kind of have an idea of where things are and like, what acquisition would look like for those rights? It seems like that's a pretty significant amount of money to determine that.
We, we do have an idea. What they help us is locating whether or not there's past farmers that may have had water rights and have since maybe sold their properties and they're still out there available that we could maybe purchase. So they're locating different rights for us, but they're also helping us with the coordination with Department of Health and Department of Ecology to locate where water rights can be accessed within Ridgefield because of the different water, I don't know how you would say that, but it's the different aquifers and things like that. So they're helping with that and locating where we can get the water rights and what's the easiest path to.
So it's more on like, kind of the legal side of it as opposed to like the geological side of it? Okay.
I would say it's kind of, it's a hydrogeologic and also the legal side, helping locate that.
Okay, that makes sense. I appreciate it.
Just one quick question. On the acquisition of Kennedy water rights, am I correct, the well is already in the ground?
The test well is, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Another clarification is, is we tell Kennedys we're using it, and you have to use it or you lose it. And most of our properties around people have had water rights, but if you don't use it for a year, you no longer have a water right. So there isn't very many of them out there that you're going to find to turn it around to benefit the city.
Right. So are we ready to move on? So next, carry forward is Royal Road South Water Main. This is, again, paid for out of system development charges. This is carrying forward 581,000 out of 600,000. This is to put in the new water line along Royal. If we got to the actual culvert replacing that, we would have, currently, the way it's set up, we would have had to do a temporary water line, and that would cost almost the same amount as just putting in the whole new water line. And then when we come back and do the full project, then we don't have to do basically double the work for the water line. And that finishes a loop within the system that we need to finish up to the high school Next one is Hall and Elm Improvements. This is a CDBG grant, system development charges for some water, and TBD for some street and storm improvements. This is carrying forward 492,000. 232,470 is the grant. This has been put on hold some, waiting for some work to be done, I believe by the port on this one. And also, we're waiting for some information. We have not gotten the grant agreement yet from the county because things have been delayed on the federal level as well. Next one is the downtown stormwater improvements. This is through a public works board loan. This is carrying forward just about 1.9 million. This is stormwater improvements to multiple areas of the city. As we are doing some of the initial design work, we discovered that there was some more work that needed to be done for the Lake River outfall and along Pioneer. So that's in front of some of the other projects that were made, so they're re-looking at the design of what needs to be done. And then we'll get that finished so that we can finish up design next year and potentially go to construction. With that, out of 6.2 million in initial appropriations, carrying forward 5 million. Next, we'll go into the personnel requests. So I'm going to hand out information that we were asked to provide by the Budget Advisory Committee. And let me see if I can get to this. If you can hand that around. So, so the process, up on the screen is what we do before we come and ask council for new personnel. So we've been doing this for multiple years. We determine whether the work's necessary, what's being done. We look at every option, efficiencies, whether it's new software, whether it's changes in process. We look at that first. Then we look at, can this be done by temporary or seasonal employees? Then we look at what's called, what we call a project position. Really, that's a sunset position where you may hire it for one or two years. And then we work hard to prove the position is needed, come back to council at that later date to approve that as a full-time position. So we look at a lot of the different aspects, work with the staff to make sure this is something that needs to come. And you'll see in some of the requests here, some changes that were recommended by the management team, and then working back with the staff to verify that it will work for what they were asking for, and then ratified basically by the Advisory Committee as well. So first off, on the police officers. We've already talked a couple of different times. We've had a study session, and we've had a first reading of a grant program and a public safety sales tax that's available. With the grant program, the state is putting funds out there for the ability to hire new employees and use for public safety purposes. So with that, the grant program's not open yet. They're still working on getting that available. The timeline that they're telling us is sometime November, December that'll be open. We plan on applying for two positions. The grant will pay for entry-level positions only on the state level. We have already put in applications for a COPS grant for two positions at the federal level. Right now, they were supposed to have announced in September whether or not we would get awarded. That has not been announced yet. Now that, you know, there's a shutdown at the federal level, we don't anticipate hearing until things are changed at that level. The COPS grant pending award and some other background, we've applied twice in the past. We have not received it in the past. They had different criteria for the award back then that is no longer in the requirements now. So we're a little bit more optimistic that we may get that. The federal level grant, though, we could hire a lateral, but it will only pay up to what an entry level would get. So there would still be a match. There is not necessarily that 75-25 split like the state level has. How we're putting it into the budget request is using the state grant as the more likely option that we would receive and will hear about sooner. So that's how it's been put in at this point. So what we've asked for, though, in the positions are a lateral and an entry level. If we did not get the COPS grant, we only got the state grant, we would pivot as needed, pending direction that council gives us. The thing that the grants will not pay for is outfitting of the officers. So vehicle, weapons, uniforms, all that type of stuff, that is on the city to pay for. They will only pay for the first year, that 75% and 25% in the grant. After that, then the city is required to cover that with commitment to keep the position. For the COPS grant, it's a three-year commitment. So the total ask for the lateral position was 284,000. For the entry level was 256,000. That includes the one-time costs as well. In the sheet that I just handed out, this was asked to kind of give a breakdown of where would the funding come from? How would we continue to pay for this? So I just broken it out. The police officer positions, total personnel cost is 293,000. One-time outfitting is 247,000. Pending, we received a state grant. That would pay almost 220,000. We would have a match, which by the work that we did for the reductions, we have one-time, our ongoing revenue that we could cover, that match amount of the 73,250, that's included in the budget. The outfitting would be coming out of reserves, 247,000 out of reserves. So the funding options are the grant opportunity, that amount I mentioned out of the general fund for the 25%, and that's just for the first year that we're talking about right now. And then our reserves, 247,000 for the outfitting. The public safety sales tax pending that is approved would cover both the match amount for the city and the outfitting cost for a total of just over 320,000. So that would come out of new money. And then also, the ongoing costs, which are roughly $300,000, it would be able to cover that as well, for that commitment period as well.
Just a quick question, and this might be more for Chief, but what are the cost savings from a training perspective about compared, like, bringing in a lateral compared to a new hire? I mean, obviously, there's an experience level, but I would think academy and having them be a ride-along. Sorry, Chief.
Okay. So some of the cost savings come with just the fact that the academy is roughly 9,000 for a entry to go in, and that doesn't include just the time that they're in training, but that pays for their academy attendance. An entry comes in already with their certification, so sometimes we can shorten those training times for them. We don't like to do that because we want to make sure that we put them through the full paces to make sure they're skilled if they're a lateral. But it does save money in that we can get them right out on the road.
Yeah.
As far as training ongoing, I mean, every officer is required to receive at least 24 hours mandated training a year through Criminal Justice Training Commission. And then on top of that, we, we rarely ever are that low. I mean, our training is anywhere from 60 hours per officer to 180 hours this year for one particular officer, which was the detective position. Because he has a lot of specialties that we're trying to get him skilled up in. So it's that front end where you get them out quickly and with the lateral, but the entry, it takes a little bit more time.
Yeah, I was just curious what, you know, what. Oh, I thought I hit it. Sorry. Yeah, I was just curious what, you know, from a financial perspective, those, those savings would be comparing the two.
I mean, realistically, they all have to have new uniforms.
Yeah, sure.
They all have to have rifles, less lethal, all of those things. So lateral, or it's just a little bit longer in how that's delayed out.
Okay, that works. Appreciate it. Thank you.
A question on local outfitting. I'm not sure I understand what that entails.
So local means it's coming from local funds. So it means it's coming from local funds, so that's, that's our reserves.
Right.
And the outfitting is the vehicle, you know, the patrol vehicle, the weapons, the uniforms, the initial training, all of the stuff to get them outfitted so that they can be on the road.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next one, and I've got another handout here. This is one that was, take that. This is for the city attorney. This is a question that was raised as to why now? So we were asked to go back and do our homework and show what are the reasons that bringing a city attorney in as a full-time position versus having a contract attorney? Did you have a question? Oh, okay. Why would we ask for that now? So there's a couple of different things. Right now, as a contract city attorney, it's a part-time position. So first off, one of the things, as you're all well aware, we do a six-year business plan. Part of that business plan is to look into the future and look at what positions do we need, and when do we expect that we should add those for need? One of them was a risk manager. We had that in the business plan to be added in 2024 and in 2025, both years. It was pushed back and didn't even make it to Budget Advisory Committee because of budget constraints and the fact that because of budget constraints and the fact that we thought that there were other higher priorities at that point. But it has been something, actually, for two business plans, it's been mentioned as something in the future and then date certain in this current business plan. So, some of the numbers of what we're looking at, the reason that it was pulled out also for the last two budgets was our deputy city manager was able to handle a lot of the risk manager duties during that time. It's getting busier for risk management. In 2012 through 2020, we averaged five or fewer claims. In 2021, that increased to 12 claims and one lawsuit. In 2023, 17 claims. And this year through September, we're at 13 claims and two lawsuits. So, having a legal background risk manager and the city attorney would be one that would take on both the city attorney duties plus the risk management duties would help potentially alleviate some of those or at the very least be at the very beginning of any claims or things like that to help work with staff on that. So, the duties include risk identification, assessment mitigation, workplace safety, insurance management, and compliance with state and federal regulations, including ADA. The estimate for a full-time risk manager as a fully separate position from what we're talking about with the city attorney is $169,000. The other thing that I don't have in here that we also do is we do have staff that do some of the risk management as far as work with the insurance companies to do claims and things like that. This would make sure that we have somebody who's also helping make sure that we're negotiating, getting the proper payment back on damaged city property or things like that where we might be the claimant versus, you know, somebody ran through our grapes and our roundabouts, you know, something like that. We've got a staff member that's just going and taking, okay, this is our invoice and that's what we do right now. So, this could help us with that. Legal documents, currently, the contract city attorney drafts resolutions, ordinances, contracts, and does contract review where people like the city manager, the planning director, public works director, myself, we prepare some of these documents. Other than Steve, none of us are attorneys, but we're preparing a lot of these documents, including our procurement information and things like that. And then at the very last, if we need to, then we're sending it to the city attorney to limit billable hours and things like that. And the fact that we're sharing a part-time city attorney with other agencies. So, this would allow us to have somebody that's in on the ground floor of preparing these documents versus having non-legal people preparing some of these off of a template that we may have. We also use, in procurement, we use a lot of consultant time to help prepare the documents. We do have templates that have been blessed by our city attorney and WCIA. But with more complex procurement, and you're well aware of this, with more complex procurement, you want more complex language and more coverage in there than what we may be putting in as a consultant engineer and our staff. So, that would allow some assistance there. So, you know, that just gives us the ability where the city attorney can be available in those meetings and at the ground level when we're starting with that. So, cost, the cost for this position is estimated at 267,000. 262,000 is ongoing cost. So, our current contract has gone up since 2020 151%. So, we're averaging in 2024, it was over $111,000 in contracted legal expense for a part-time city attorney. When you add in the position, if we got a full-time risk manager, we're actually saving by hiring the city clerk, or city attorney and having that person do both of those duties, we're saving $18,000. So, that's the work that we went back and worked through to answer some of the questions from the advisory committee. So, I'd open it up for any questions, especially from the advisory committee, if, you know, kind of talking about what they mentioned.
Counsel, any questions on this topic in particular? Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I guess my curiosity about that is whether we would allow that individual to still do limited work for other jurisdictions that would sort of, you know, maybe still go through, like subcontract out or no?
No, that would be a full-time position with the city, so we would have 100% of, you know, that time.
Of their bandwidth. Okay. All right. Excellent.
Just looking at the cost factors here, so like in the spreadsheet, it talks about a budget of 123K per year for legal contract, legal contracting. So, are we essentially just folding that into the cost of this position of the 267? And so, is net new spending on this would be for the risk management position in this would be about 140,000? Is that the way I understand it?
Yeah, that's correct. Last year, like I said, it was a little over 111,000. This year's budget was 123,000 for that position alone. So, in the budget, the way that it's written up now and presented, it would eliminate that 123,000 and then that would roll into personnel costs instead.
Okay. How do we factor that in when we look at, say, a city attorney position and the salary that goes with that and then a risk management position? Is that, I mean, it's kind of a hybrid position, but for the compensation portion of it, are we just paying it as a city attorney? Like, this what we pay the city attorney or is this, are we kind of like doing a little bit of, kind of like mix and match?
Yeah, it would be paid as a city attorney position because that's what the position would be.
Yeah.
A lot of the risk management, though, you do want a legal aspect to that. So, we're paying for that experience and knowledge.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, counsel? All right.
Okay, so, we move on. So, on the next one, it showed that $123,000 that was being removed out of the budget. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. The next request was for a civil engineering tech. Excuse me. This would be paid out of general fund, water fund, and storm fund. 171,000 total request, 121,000 ongoing personnel costs, and then 50,000 for vehicle and computer and things like that. This is a tech on a two-year sunset. So, this is one of those steps that we've talked about in how we look at adding positions. This would be, right now, with our capital project team, we have project managers and then we have our deputy public works director in charge of the capital. This position would do some of the more administrative-type work and some of the work in going out in the field that would relieve the project managers from doing more of the higher-level work. So, we're trying to right-size, you know, the workload. So, this allows them, plus we have a lot of very large projects right now. We've got two big water projects that are coming. As you've seen, they've worked pretty hard on the pint and widening project, but we've also used consultant for that. This position is also intended to reduce on some of the smaller projects, the use of consultant work so that we can take some of that consultant work that we're paying for with local funds and put this into our own position to help pay for that and get that taken care of. And it is a two-year sunset, so we would need to come back to you in two years to show that it has worked as we're mentioning it here. And then counsel makes the final decision at that time. Okay? So, the next two positions were asked for as full-time positions, a seasonal, excuse me, an operations worker for streets, excuse me, and an operation worker for stormwater. So, as we were kind of talking about this, one of the things that came up is during the reduction phase, the operations team specifically in streets and parks reduced one of their seasonal positions to help us get back to a balanced budget. So, in doing that, we asked the question, okay, if you don't need the seasonal, why a full-time position? We went back, would it be better to get the seasonal back and then be able to flex out their time with the other seasonals that you have and work just during the times that you really need that position, which is mainly during the growing season? Because the position was really looking at maintaining the right-of-ways, the front edge and things like that. So, could we get a seasonal at a lower cost to do that currently? And then as the budget and revenues increase, then we can look at a full-time position at that time. Similar story with the stormwater seasonal. They didn't need to give up a seasonal, but rather than hire a full-time position and looking at what are the needs and what time of the year are the needs for that position? Can you use a seasonal? And then with the current seasonals already in the budget, can you flex them out so you're covering more of that time? They went back, they ran their numbers, they looked at their scheduling, and they came back and said, yeah, this would work. That way, it saves us, you know, roughly $80,000 on each position with the idea that we also don't need to purchase equipment and things like that long-term for them as well. So, that was a way to really reduce that and that fits, you know, what we told you about how we look at the positions and go back to more of an efficiency and then start with the seasonals, then go to the sunset and then ask for a position. So, that's what we looked at for that, those two positions there. And advisory committee was on board with what we had done there. Okay? So, total ongoing for the positions is 623,000 with about 302,001 time costs. So. So, next, we'll go into a couple of different classifications. Technology first. The first one is a portable mobile radio replacement. On that first handout that I gave you, there's also information on that. So, what this is, is the majority of our radios, both in the vehicles and the portable ones or mobile ones on their bodies, are no longer supported as of September 30th by Motorola, which is the manufacturer we bought them from. That doesn't mean they don't work. They still work, but if they break, we don't have an authorized servicer to fix them. So, Cressa, pretty much every agency is in the same boat here, where a good portion of their radios are no longer supported. Cressa was looking at a large purchase to help agencies. We could get a 10% discount if we replace them all, but the replacement for all of them is 233,000. We do have a pretty tight budget right now. We thought that's a pretty heavy lift. The advisory committee agreed, said, go back, get us some options, and then bring that to council. So, we came with three options, which is replace all 30, that's a 233,000, do a three-year replacement plan, which is roughly about 70,000 a year, or replace as needed. Replace as needed, what that means is if one breaks, then we go ahead and buy one. There are basically about 6,000 for one and 8,000 for another. So, you know, one for the car and one for the person. They're not going to break at the same time, hopefully. But that would be a way to reduce costs next year, not have to replace any. The other thing that we also found out is Vancouver has, they're planning on replacing most of theirs right away. They have about 100 of these same radios that they would sell us with everything, the charging station and all that, for $1,000 apiece. There's that potential to buy a couple extra, have them on hand. If one breaks, we just move on to the other. So, we're not down while we're waiting for a radio order.
What about vehicles?
Same thing.
Still $1,000 for the vehicle or handheld?
That's what I understand, yes. So, but that's also an option and/or it's just replace as needed. We order a new one from the manufacturer if they break.
Yeah, we'll get one question real quick. To do that, what if we bought from Vancouver? So, if we buy brand-new, is there any sort of, like, other than having a brand-new device, is there like a warranty benefit to having that that we wouldn't get through, you know, the discount through the pre-owned ones with City of Vancouver?
There's typically a very short warranty. With that type of equipment, you usually at the very most have a year warranty. Most of our radios have been lasting 10-plus years. So, we haven't had a lot of issues with them, but, you know, right now, we have, well, we did have places where we could take them to get them fixed.
Yeah.
Now, we would have to go and find, is there another dealer that would be willing to work on them? We could look into that as well. But that's the options, you know, we want to try to get your input.
I guess I'm looking at, like, what is our projected lifespan for the used ones we might buy versus having a new one for 10-plus years?
Some of them are older and some of them are relatively new, you know, in the last few years. So, like I said, we've had them last 10-plus years.
Okay.
In the cars, we move them from car to car. What our plan would be is we replace a car, we would replace the radio within the car as well so that we start to make sure that we're not letting them go the 10-plus years.
Okay. We'll go to Counselor Davis and then other questions. And then probably, are you looking for feedback on that here?
Yes.
Okay, so counsel, if you could be ready to provide feedback on which direction to go for the replacement plan, Counselor Davis?
Yeah, I mean, your commentary kind of got to the meat of what my question was, was how frequent that happens, that we need to, that we need to have them serviced or fully on replace and things like that. I guess I'll put out sort of what my gut instinct is, but I would love for there to be some data that suggests that that's a good idea. I kind of like the thought of doing the three-year role, but getting some backups from Vancouver and if we could get some of the newer ones that they've had that maybe have a little bit more life in them. I feel like that's a reasonable, like, hey, we're going to be getting them replaced in short order. We're kind of covering ourselves for that 36-month period if something does go down. And I think maybe financially, that's a reasonable way to spread that cost a little bit. But again, I'd like some data to suggest that that's maybe responsible in terms of the actual replacement timelines.
Great, thank you. Counselor Wells?
I think I'd probably like to defer my question to the chief, but my own personal instinct is I would rather see us get some extra used ones and have them on hand. I've had radios in the past and down the road, individuals like Motorola, Motorola, or my Verizon, and they turn around and phase out the airwaves and you have to throw them away, the radios that goes that way. So, chief, the used ones, would they work? I mean, if we had 10 or had 15 extras just to have them on hand, would that buy us some time and we still could buy down the road a whole new set if they pan out?
That's correct. So, like, the radio that I have on me right now, I've had this for 10 years and I haven't had any issues with it right now. I mean, it's functioning. Yes, if it breaks, then it's not supported. We have to try to find a vendor. But we, if we had a few of the surplus radios in storage, that would probably buy us some time. It's hard without a crystal ball to predict exactly when these are going to break because we don't know. The mobile radios are a little bit different. The mobile radios, it's not because there's a newer version out. My understanding is if we buy mobile radios for the cars, they'll be the same type of radios we have now. So, I think one of the options that we need, that we would ask you to consider is that as we get new cars, we just replace those radios. We don't move them from a car to a car. I think that'll help us with the mobile situation if you guys choose to go that route. The portables, we do have a couple spare now, but if we get Vancouver and we do kind of direct and get the ones that are maybe not quite as old, then I think they will have a shelf life. But once again, that's me kind of predicting because I don't know, but that certainly is a viable option.
Mayor Podden?
What was the price of the new ones again?
So, the portables are just under 8,000 for the portable radios, for these radios. And then the cars are a little about, right around 6,500 roughly.
Okay. So, I'm in favor of buying some newer of the used ones from Vancouver also and having them as backups. I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Sure. Well, Counselor Favella, do you have anything first? We'll go down the line. We'll go down the line. Anything? If not, it's okay, I'll just...
No, it's fine. I'm in favor of having some on hand and then kind of doing a rollout where we're also replacing them at the same time, but having backup. What I don't want to do is not have any backup and then we're in that, there's no available, no wiggle room to go without. So we need to make sure that we're prepared for that.
Okay, so when we say the three-year replacement plan, seventy thousand per year, so that that pans out to two-ten?
Roughly, there'll be one or two radios that would have to be either that third year and/or fourth year.
Is there a distinction in saving money in doing the longer-term plan there, instead of doing two-thirty-three upfront?
So, so the two-thirty-three upfront includes a ten percent discount that they've talked with Motorola about. If we go to a plan, we probably would not be getting a discount in future years.
On the plan.
But it's a cash flow for now that's a benefit, yeah.
Okay. And then how many other cities are talking about doing this? Like, if we're like, we would like your new radios, Vancouver, is that, is it realistic that we're going to get first, come first serve on that, or is there a lot of other cities that are doing this too?
I know they replaced a hundred portables last year, and they're going to replace another hundred this year. I don't think, even with our small agencies, I don't know that any of them are really looking at that option, other than when I talked to a couple chiefs the other day. So I think there's a fair amount to go around, as far as that goes.
Counselor Birkel?
Thank you. I would certainly be in favor of the three-year replacement plan, however, also buying some from Vancouver, and then on the three-year, replace the oldest radios we had every year. And then we would soon be to the point where most of the radios we would have would be new. Thank you.
Thank you. If, if the public safety tax was, we approved that, and next year when we do budget, we have surplus, could we then change our plan and just say, you know what, we have the money, let's just go ahead and do it?
Yes, and, and kind of, well, we were going to have kind of an idea of how we can use that sales tax if council chooses to move forward next week, but that is one of the options. If we did the three-year replacement plan, we would have funding from the estimate of what we'll have, not only to pay the personnel cost and the one-time cost for outfitting them, but also paying for the three-year plan for this year. And then going forward, council can make that decision, that that is also that, to make sure that we update these over that three-year plan, that's part of where that money goes.
Sounds like you have pretty good consensus from council. I'm with everybody else in saying that do a phased replacement. As far as like purchasing some surplus ones right now, I would just defer to staff on that, whatever you think is best, because if it was maybe not replacing a full third this year, maybe just, you know, saying, hey, we have, we hold a few new ones back as replacements for when other ones break, then we have those on the hand. But whatever, whatever staff thinks is best there, but I think a phased replacement is kind of the way that council's giving direction at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Okay, so, so the next one in the technology initiatives is an AMI software meter reading upgrade. And I think we've talked about this a little bit before. This would be out of the Water Operating Fund. This would be upgrading our meter reading software. And a little bit of background for the newer council members, Counselor Wells is well-aware that we used to do everything manual, and then we had a phased replacement program to move to electronic meters where we could either walk the city and it would just read the meter, and/or eventually we upgraded to be able to drive the city. And this is the next phase of that, which would mean that the utility clerk could sit at their desk and read all of the meters within the city. And then that frees up the water utility crew to do maintenance versus having to go out and do meter reads for a couple of different reasons, whether it's the billing cycle, whether it's move-in, move-outs, or things like that. And then this meter gives you real-time data, so if you do have a leak, we can notice that immediately. We've had a recent bunch of different leaks that we don't know about it until two months later, because we bill every two months, so you do the reading, and it's like, wow, you know, this person, their reading is double or triple than what they had the same time last year. We had a recent business that, you know, had a leak, and it was a pretty significant refund that we had to give them for fixing that leak, but it's also a water loss. So when we're talking about our conservation, this will help with our conservation program, it helps with the water loss, and then it also helps keep the bills down to a reasonable level and help the businesses and/or residents be able to make sure that they don't have those leaks that could damage other things on their property as well. So this is a total of three hundred thousand dollars, twenty, roughly four thousand of that would be ongoing in software costs to allow us to do this.
So on this one, is there a software we use right now, or are we doing it manually right now, still?
No, right now we drive the city, and when we did it manually, it was about five days of everybody onboard doing it. Now it takes a couple of hours each day, roughly half a day to read the entire city. And we have probably three times as many accounts now as we did back then, we have over six thousand accounts. This would allow just one person to do it.
Oh, okay, so this is an upgrade, we use software, but it's an upgrade that would further make it more efficient, okay.
Yes.
Counselor Birkel?
Do we have any indication as to what the cost savings would be regarding no one driving through the community, but being able to do this in one location?
So right now, we have to have two people driving, one person driving, one person actually reading, so there's one person that you eliminate for a minimum of, you know, about five hours each day. So they're able to move on to more maintenance duties. And then we have to send work orders every time someone wants to close their account, we have to send a work order for someone to go out and do the electronic read by hand with their electronic meter reader. So it eliminates that as well. So there's, you know, we have minimum of thirty, sometimes to fifty a month that we're having to do, so they're going out, and that's probably a good hour minimum. So there's quite a bit of labor time that we can reallocate to other sources.
We can quantify that when we bring it back.
Counselor Davis?
Thank you. I'm guessing that the, like, I mean, it says that this is upgrading to the software, but there's got to be some sort of installation component to that. I'm assuming that we would maybe reallocate that time that they were going to spend going out and doing the reading to doing the install, is that a fair assumption?
Ferguson, the vendor that we work with for meter reading, they would be doing the install.
Okay.
So it'll be like a construction project. Basically, they have to install once and then the meter reading equipment's there. Our staff will not be doing the installation.
Okay, is that part of the three hundred thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so that's part of it?
Yeah, permitting costs, everything is included.
How, for lack of a better way of putting it, how invasive is that in, like, terms of people's property?
It'll be one pole that will be put in, in a park that will overlook the entire city, and then I believe one on either our water reservoir or something like that. So it's like a, almost like a mini cell tower.
Oh, so there's nothing like actually attached to everybody's?
No.
Meter or anything?
Nope.
Okay.
We already have the radio reads on all of the meters in their meter box.
Okay, that helps that, okay, okay. So that's just, perfect, awesome, thank you.
Counselor Wells, I think you had a question?
No, I didn't have a question, just a statement. Anytime somebody moves out of a rental, then the water department has to turn around and have a reading, what was charged to the last person or the new one starting. And so that takes a lot of manpower, two people, and I think that happens on Mondays. Is it every Mondays? Whoops.
I would have to check on that, I'm not a hundred percent sure what.
I know what happens on Monday. The software, you suggested that it could detect a leak at someone's property?
It will detect the higher usage over a very short period of time, so we can go investigate and let them know we think there's a leak and then help them determine that.
Thank you.
Other questions, council, before moving on for this one? Okay. Just, just because I want to be sensitive to time, because we have another item on the agenda, are we going to go through everything here?
Well, I can go through faster. If there's questions, ask them, I'll just kind of let you know what they are.
Okay.
And then we can go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So, next couple are operating initiatives. It's the downtown subarea plan update. This is through the RISE program that came out of the council retreat for fifty thousand out of general fund. Then climate planning work, this is completing and moving forward to some stuff that we're already doing with the comp plan for a hundred thousand paid with a grant. And then a new updated community survey for twenty-five thousand out of the general fund. City facility initiatives, this is park laundry cleanup monitoring, you're already aware of this, paid for out of a grant for sixty-seven thousand next year. Then I'll move on to vehicle and equipment initiatives. Most of the, four of these are from the Equipment Replacement Fund, we already have the funding in that fund. We talked about we'll push some replacements forward from twenty-seven to twenty-eight, but next year we're okay. And then a new one would be a detective vehicle to purchase something that's not standing out as they're working their cases. That would be forty-five thousand, and twenty thousand of that would come, we have some vehicles we would surplus, so we'd use that funding to help offset the cost on this. And then finally, the final two are op center backup generator. We don't have a backup generator at our op center right now, and it's our emergency location. This is for a hundred thousand. We still have forty thousand remaining in bond funds from when we bought the operations center that can be used for equipment and tenant improvement, so we'd use twenty thousand of that for this. And twenty thousand for the next one on the next page, which is a salt and salt brine equipment for snow and ice removal. That's ninety-three thousand, of which twenty thousand would come from the bond. That allows us to continue, you know, our, our snow removal, because we no longer will be able to get ice, our de-icer and also sand. That's being eliminated and our sources are going away. So everybody's using salt.
What are the potential, what's the potential revenue if we were to become salt brine dealers?
So, we did bring that up with the Advisory Committee, there are three entities that have reached out to us, the center, the school district, and the port, that if we purchase this equipment, they would be willing to buy some from us. It's not going to be a lot, but it will offset some of our costs and offset, you know, what we're doing. So there is a little bit, we have not been able to identify how much yet, we'd have to look into that.
Okay, thanks.
Are we going to let the community know that we're going to be moving to this method in the wintertime, because that salt brine does have more wear and tear on vehicles?
We would need to, and I know the county in Vancouver has already moved and they've notified people, so yes, we would. Okay?
Okay, we're good.
So next are street and multimodal capital projects. The first one is the downtown district streetlight enhancement, this came also out of RISE. And, excuse me again, this also is a project that we had on a couple of years ago, and it's coming back to begin a two-year phased replacement of lights downtown. Then there's the G Creek Loop Construction Project. We've already been doing design, as you're well-aware, and we would move to construction next year. We're getting to the point where we'll have grant agreements with the county for the CDVG grant. And then that's one point three million, of which seven hundred and seventeen thousand comes from either the grant or a Public Works Board loan. The remaining, mainly comes from TBD and the water fund. Then there's South Tenth, Eleventh Crossing, planning and thirty percent design to get us where we could start looking for grants. And this is coming from an RTC grant for three hundred and ninety-one thousand. Then Piner Street Slope Stabilization, this is coming from a commerce grant that was provided by the legislature in this most recent legislative session for one point five million, and we're working on grant agreements right now. And then the ongoing sidewalk replacement program and pavement preservation program from the Transportation Benefit District. This is the preservation portion of it, there's other things that come out of the TBD that are related to specific projects. And on to park and trail, there are two that we'll want some direction on here. First one is the Ridgefield Community and Recreation Center, fifteen million. Currently, that is funded with debt issuance pending council approval. The debt issuance request for approval wouldn't come until next year. So debt service, if we do go to the debt issuance, would, this is going to go down a little bit, I have the initial estimate, so I'll change that. Then we get to the Boyce Park frontage improvements, this is grant and park impact fees, almost three hundred and nineteen thousand from grant. We should be hearing about that before the end of the year, whether we get awarded that. We were told that that's a very good project for what we submitted, and that would go to construction next year. Then there's the two that I'd like more direction on. Hayden Park lifecycle improvements, what that really means is replacing the playground equipment with what's there, with more inclusive playground equipment. It is not all of the equipment at the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar budget, but we're looking at what we can do with that amount with a fifty-fifty grant versus general fund match. So that's the one, we talked about it in Budget Advisory Committee. Initially, it was requested as not being grant contingent, but we talked about it and presented it to the Budget Advisory Committee as being grant contingent for this project. And then the next one, the Horns Corner project, at a fifty-fifty match to grant amount. For the Horns Corner, it'd be completing design and bid package for a phased construction of, again, an inclusive playground and park amenities.
On both of those, we've identified grant programs that we think we could be successful in, for Hayden, looking at Community Development Block Grant, because it is inclusive play equipment, there's no income survey necessary, so we think we could actually be successful within that. And for Horns Corner, looking at, next spring, looking at a state RCO grant.
So, any questions? Are we okay as it's presented? Okay?
One question for Mr. Stewart, what happens if we don't get the RCO grant?
So the way that it's being presented right now is that both of these parks would be grant contingent, so the improvements that you see before you would not occur unless we get those grant funds. And then if we don't get them, we would come back and ask you, you know, what else would you like us to pursue?
Thank you.
But there's still a fifty percent match on it, so even though it's the right kind of grant contingent, there's still fifty percent which would be coming out of our coffers.
Correct.
Counselor Davis?
And just to confirm, like, the contingency is like at the fifty percent threshold, like, the dollar-for-dollar kind of?
Yes.
So it's not like, oh, you know, the grant covers twenty percent, you know, we're still going to do it?
Well, we're presenting it at the fifty-fifty, we would have to come back to council and present to them, what are we being offered if we get awarded the grant? And that'll be part of the application process when we come back, actually, that'll be on next week to request us putting in an application for that CDVG grant. If we don't get the full amount that's fifty-fifty, we would ask you for your direction on, do we pay the additional match or do we keep looking?
Okay, okay, that makes sense. I just wanted to see how concrete that fifty-fifty piece was in this. All right, thanks.
So the final two are Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan, commonly called a PROS Plan. This is updating the current PROS Plan, which to apply for RCO grants and some other grants, we have to have a complete adoptive plan that's sometime within the six years, ours is about ready to. Ours is about ready to expire, so we do have to do this to become grant eligible. We can still apply for those grants. We just wouldn't be able to take um any of the funding if we don't have the plan done before funding would be available. The final one is the Noxious Weed Management Program, um mainly around G Creek, uh with a ten thousand dollar ongoing cost to do noxious weed abatement. So, and then next is Water Capital Projects. Um, first one, you're well aware of, uh Eastside Reservoir Construction, um thirteen point three-two-five million, um mainly paid from debt issuance and then also some SDC funding. Uh, we currently have a fifteen million dollar um loan that we've been awarded and we're working on finishing up the agreement on that. Uh, that should be coming relatively soon. It is um coming from state funds for replenishment, so we don't have to worry about the um feds because it is a combination state-fed program. This is a two-year project, so that's why the construction amount at thirteen million is less than what that that loan amount is um currently. Um, and then we're looking at um potential other funding options for the remaining amount of that project because it's a um twenty-six point six-five million overall project. Um, next one is Royal Road Waterline and Intertie. Um, this is going north out of the city to meet up with a CPU um transmission line so that we have access to another intertie and it doubles our ability um for how much we can draw from CPU um at any one time. And the estimated amount, and this is a high-level amount right now, is five million for both design and construction. CPU will do all the design. Um, we will have to manage the construction portion of the project.
And we'll hear, you'll hear more about this project on the twenty-third. We'll be bringing the intertie agreement to you and we'll be talking about that ahead of time.
So I have a question for you. So I see all these things are twenty-seventh, so, and I I heard earlier in the presentation that Kennedy Well is not going to be ready next year?
That's correct.
So are we going to have any additional water in twenty-twenty-six? I'm, I'm.
So. When is the, when's Eastside?
Uh, Eastside is storage and that'll be twenty-twenty-seven.
The beginning.
At the beginning, uh, we're breaking ground probably after the first of the year.
Yeah, we're, we're almost ready to go to H.
Okay.
So a quick answer is, quick answer is no. Uh, there won't be additional storage or capacity online. But again, the good news of that, and we'll go, and it's a good question about, as we're talking about capacity and storage, and you had raised the point at our last meeting that as we end the conservation strategy period, that we need to also talk with people about what we're doing for storage and capacity. Uh, that work is underway to have a message created for that, and I'll get that to you when we have it, which should be um by the beginning of next week, by the beginning of next week.
I guess for some reason I thought we were going to have more capacity in twenty-six.
Yeah, we had anticipated that Kennedy Well would be coming on by twenty-six, but with the ecology, uh, with the Department of Ecology making us look into whether or not there's any impacts to the aquifer before, beyond what we have already proven, uh, because they just don't believe us that it's coming from the Columbia River Aquifer. So they're actually extending the review period to get from test well to active well to give us our capacity uh increase. So that's been the biggest issue, uh, is that process with ecology, and that's why the intertie becomes that much more important because it's already existing water rights. You don't have to fight ecology for them.
Okay, all right, sorry, but I.
Not at all.
Council Davis.
Yeah, thank you. Um, the meeting you went to yesterday with CPU, is that, would that impact this number or this capacity at all, or is that north side?
So it won't impact this number, but it will impact kind of the ongoing costs associated with the transmission of water through that, and we will talk with you about it. One of the reasons it's coming to you on the twenty-third and not on the ninth is because CPU's Board of Commissioners has a meeting to discuss rate structure on the seventeenth of October, and so we want that to have already occurred before we come back to you.
Okay, so this is still like the safe number.
Correct.
Right?
Yes.
Cool, thank you.
Other questions or comments at this point, Council? Seeing none, move on.
Okay, so the next request for water is a junction well filtration maintenance. This is just an ongoing um program that currently we're doing every two years, and this is to um drain the sludge and haul the sludge off out of the fifty-six um uh program, so it'd be twenty-five thousand per year. This improves uh water quality and um allows us um some, they explained it to me and I'm sorry, but I'm not going to be able to explain it very well, but if you have questions, we can get that. Then next one is lead service line inventory. This is um a requirement that we have to finish. We've um gotten most of our um lines um checked and we have two hundred and seventy-five service lines left to comply with the DOH and EPA rules. Um, this would be a two-year program to finish this out, um sixty-five thousand next year to check different lines. So far, we have not found any. Final is um a second phase of the Abrams Well Field Study, um and this is paid out of a DOH grant for thirty thousand. Um, and it just um continues the project to evaluate the performance of that well field. So final um request here is the Stormwater Capital Projects and its municipal stormwater permit consultant services, um seventy thousand dollars. This would be paid out of an ecology grant that we're receiving for a hundred and twenty thousand. And um this would help with um uh setting up Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, code revisions for development, and tree canopy mapping, which we may actually be able to uh work on, something another entity did there. Uh, but this is all related to the MS four permit that we're now subject to. Um, total expense is ninety thousand. Um, I believe some of this is going to occur the following year.
Has a consultant been selected?
No, because we don't have this approved yet to even go out. So we would go out early next year.
Okay, thank you.
So with that, any questions? That's all of the, um, so this one that's up on screen is really just by category of what we just talked about, where the the funding would come from or what it supports. If we go on to the next one, Julie, um, this is the same one that I handed out and showed you. This is the impact, uh, again, that six hundred and ten thousand in general fund will go down with the three-year um plan for the radios, so we'll reduce that pretty significantly. And then if um we choose to move forward with any um additional um new funding sources, then that would also impact that number as well. Um, and then some of that is for capital, so it can come from the capital reserve.
Great, thanks. Uh, looking at all of these, these new initiatives and spending, you know, and looking at the debt we take on, it's, we're kind of pushing close to forty million this next year that we'd, and new debt that would be issued, is that about right?
Well, it depends on, if you're looking at general fund, no, it's about fifteen million. That would put us at at close to our our cap. The other um debt is coming from mainly a water fund and stormwater, and that's paid out of rate um charges.
Right.
And we do factor that into the rate study and our our fees that we charge.
Okay, my my, the, I'm teeing that up to say, to ask if, like, what does that do to our financial position or credit rating? Does that do, does that have any impact on that? Or does that put us in a position where we couldn't take on new debt in the future? What is our threshold again?
So that will, um, if we do issue debt for the community center, um, that's our general debt for council manic, we would be very close to our cap, so we would not have a lot of flexibility there.
Until we paid other things off.
Correct.
Correct.
We would still have the ability to go out for voted debt, which when you go out for voted debt, then you're also asking them to increase their property taxes typically to pay for that. Um, that's, that's a voter decision there. As far as um council manic, again, we would be very close. The debt that we'd be looking for in water, um, that again is revenue bonds that we'd be looking at and or the um, so it's revenue bonds and then also it's that DWSRF loan. That's paid for out of rate, so that's, that doesn't impact general. So we would have a separate credit rating actually for our utilities and a credit rating for our general government.
Okay, so that, that stuff that would come out of, would you say REIT that, or for the utility?
For general, it'll come out of REIT and park impact fees eventually. We'll have to um pay some of that and and general fund. For water, it's going to come from the water SDCs and operating.
Okay, so like, yeah, so tho- those don't impact our council manic debt threshold at all?
No.
Okay.
Because that's the, that's a different bucket that is approved.
And then what is our long-term, uh, longer-term outlook? I guess over the next, you know, through, say through the end of the decade, or is there going to be, you know, we do this every year, you know, the budget process every year? What is the the outlook on taking on new debt or the need to take on new debt in the future and our ability to to do so after this year?
So with the tax increment area, we did have a plan to go out for debt again around twenty-thirty for the overpass. Depending on where assessed values go and also how much we pay off on our debt, that's going to impact what we would have available.
Okay. From your position as the CFO of the city, like, like, does, do you feel good about the position that we are in after taking on new debt this year and what our our outlook looks between twenty-twenty-six and twenty-thirty?
So where we're at right now, um, I believe the tax increment area, if it builds out the way that we forecasted it would, I think that's going to cover the Pioneer Widening Bonds. The other bonds um should be covered through REIT. That's hard to forecast, though, because prices are up.
Sure.
Interest rates are up. Um, sales are are not up. They're, they're going down, so we aren't getting the same revenue as we initially thought we would and um forecast, but, you know, two years from now, that could completely change.
Okay, thank you. Council, other questions or other comments on the budget portion? Wow, you're off easy then. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we will wrap up this portion of our study session. Um, we will be moving next to an executive session. This is pursuant to RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one one zero one G. This is to evaluate the qualifications of an applicant for a public employment or to review performance of a public employee. We will go to executive session for twenty minutes? Twenty, okay, let's set it for. Yeah, let's, yeah, we'll, we'll return at five forty-five, we'll extend the time, and it looks like there could be action following the study, uh, the executive session. Okay, it's six fifteen and Council is just returning from our executive session where we uh conducted a performance review of our city manager. Uh, before we uh take any action, is there any, I'd like to just open up the Council, any comments or any, any thoughts that you'd like to share for the good of the order? Are we ready to just move on? Okay, sounds good. Yeah, okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we um, that we move forward with giving our city manager a um, a raise for this year of seven and a half percent and a bonus of twenty thousand dollars.
Second. Okay, it's been moved in second in Council, uh, to give the city manager a seven and a half percent compensation increase as long with a twenty thousand dollar bonus for for this year. Any other discussion?
Merit, merit bonus.
Merit bonus, yes. Any other discussion at this? Okay, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Council, and thank you, Mr. Stewart, for your service to the city, and we really do appreciate your leadership and everything you've contributed, so. Uh, with that, this meeting is adjourned.
Yes.